Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the city council's agenda briefing for June 6, 2024. My name is Esther Vanheimer. I'm mayor of the city of Asheville. I would just like to do a few preliminaries. All council members and staff are participating virtually. The live meeting will be streamed on the city's YouTube channel, accessed through the YouTube icon on the front page of the city's website, or via the livestream. The live meeting will be available on Charter Spectrum Channel 193. You can also listen to the meeting via phone at 855-925-2801 with meeting code 1286. And as we perform that for these meetings, we do not take public comment during agenda briefings. Council and staff, please unmute yourselves and say a quick hello when I call your name. Vice Mayor Sandra Kilgore.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Sage Turner. She looks a little frozen. Okay. Councilwoman Shanika Smith.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Antoinette Mosley.
Hello.
Councilwoman Kim Brownie.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Meg.
Good morning.
City manager Deborah Campbell.
Good morning.
Assistant city manager Rachel Wood.
Good morning.
Assistant city manager Ben Woody.
Morning.
Assistant city attorney John Maddox.
Morning.
And city clerk Maggie Burmison.
Good morning.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, excuse me, again, and welcome to our city council agenda briefing meeting. These meetings are designed to review some key items that are scheduled for council consideration. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 11, and we will have a different location than it being in City Hall. It will be at Harrah's Cherokee Center at 5 o'clock. In these meetings, we also review upcoming committee meeting agendas, as well as items scheduled to come to council over the next eight weeks. The majority of our time today, I'm sure, will likely be spent on the part of the agenda under other issues and updates, where we're going to discuss the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. As you know, the budget is scheduled for adoption at the upcoming June 11 council meeting. Assistant city manager Rachel Wood will cover the June 11 agenda now, and I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Thank you, Deborah, and good morning again, mayor and city council members. As Deborah stated, the meeting starts at 5 o'clock in Harrah's. And moving into the agenda itself, we do not have any scheduled proclamations, and we have a relatively short consent agenda. I only plan on covering two items, but as is our typical process, if you have questions on items I don't cover, please feel free to let me know, and we'll cover those items as well. The first consent agenda item I'm going to cover is item B. And you may recall that with the fiscal year 2024 budget, you approved $300,000 for an urban forest master plan. And this master plan is part of a progressive effort that started first with hiring our new urban forester. And this master plan is the next step to protect and advance our tree canopy. A request for proposals was advertised in March of 2024 with three responsive proposals. Proposals once received were reviewed by an eight-member team that included a cross-section of city staff, as well as members of the Urban Forestry Commission. The selected firm, which is Urban Canopy Works, is a women-owned small business that specializes in tree canopy work in urban and developed areas, and the contract total is $269,000. Moving on to item D. Item D is a resolution of support and an associated maintenance agreement for two North Carolina Department of Transportation projects, including a spot safety project that is to construct sidewalks along sections of Smokey Park Highway, and a spot mobility project to extend the southbound right turn lane on Hendersonville Road, Long Shoals Road, to reduce congestion, add a sidewalk, and provide a fully ADA accessible bus pad. Moving down, we do not have anything scheduled under presentations and reports. There will not be a city manager's report. And the public hearing, which was originally scheduled for this meeting, the 767 New Hawk Creek conditional zoning, has been continued to the July 23 city council meeting. Next, under the agenda, we have unfinished business, and we have two very substantive items.
Rachel, can I?
Yes.
Can I just give a brief update on the Hawk Creek?
Sure.
So we've had a couple of meetings with the developer and neighborhood representatives. The most recent one was last week, and Sage and Antoinette were able to attend. And some different options were put out there by the by the developer, and the neighborhood gave feedback, and the neighborhood's actually helping them facilitate the one that the neighborhood prefers, because it preserves the most amount of forest. And there's been some good news on that, some progress on that, so we're crossing our fingers. More to come, and that's one of the reasons this is being delayed again, in order for them to try to explore this option and see if it's viable, and then bring us back to where I was. That's all. I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Mayor. So moving to unfinished business, as the city manager mentioned, the majority of today's discussion will most likely focus on the fiscal year 2025 budget. And so we'll skip over that for now, and then cover it in greater detail later on in today's meeting. And then item B is the Business Improvement District. And so this item has two parts. The first is a resolution prepared by council guiding staff in the preparation of a request for proposals for a contracted service provider to administer the bid. The resolution stemmed from conversation that happened at the May 14 first reading of the bid ordinance. And I believe that the resolution has been attached for your reference. The second portion of this item is the second reading of the bid ordinance, and passage of this ordinance at the June 11 meeting establishes the bid boundaries and tax rate that will be included in the FY '25 annual operating budget. Councilmember Roni.
I think I saw this in the memo, but I was just wondering if we could confirm that I'm reading it right, that this would also include personal property and vehicles in the tax?
Yes.
Correct, counselor. If I could jump in real quick, Rachel. So the initial valuation provided by the Leukem County Tax Office did not include personal property, so the anticipated tax rate was .0919. We now have that updated information from the tax office. So with the personal property and the boundaries of the bid, the proposed tax rate would be .0877. So the addition of the personal property lowered the tax rate by, you know, I think that's almost four cents. And I do plan to cover that.
Can you say that?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You say it again, Ben. You said lower it by four cents, but didn't you just say it would be .08? Say it again.
Or .410. I said that incorrectly. Thank you. Wrong, yes. It would be, it went from .0919, so nonsense, down to .0877.
And that was just because the tax office made an error in calculating it, because you always include personal property in a property tax. You can't separate those out. You can't legally pull those apart. They just forgot to include it.
Correct. So we now have the, what we believe is the accurate tax rate that would create a $1.2 million bid budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and the only remaining item under new business is boards and commissions appointments. Barring any additional questions related to the June 11 agenda, we can briefly cover upcoming council committee agendas, and I will turn it over to Ben Woody to cover the June 10 Planning and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Rachel. For our upcoming PED agenda, we actually only have one item this month, and it's a very critical item. So we have Nathan Moneyham from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, who is going to provide the PED committee an update on the optimization and refinement period for the I-26 connector project. So he will be there to share information on the status of that project and the next steps as they begin negotiations with the selected design build contractor. And I do want to note PED will have this item at their June meeting, but we do plan to have Nathan at full council on June 23 to provide basically the same presentation and probably incorporating any feedback we get from PED at that meeting. Any questions on that item at PED? Okay. And Rachel, if it's okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move to Boards and Commissions Committee. Policy and Finance is canceled. So we have three items at our Boards and Commissions Committee this month. We have our typical board and commission appointments that Boards and Commissions Committee will go through, and of course, you saw those on your regular agenda. The second item we have is, we're gonna have a discussion at Boards and Commission to determine if they want to interview the appointed seats for the TDA and the Planning, Zoning Commission. Assuming that Boards and Commission does want to do interviews, we would conduct those interviews on September 11, and then hopefully make those appointments also on September 11. And then the third item, we're gonna get an update from Stephanie Dahl, our Planning and Urban Design Director. She has organized a, what they're calling a PUD Department Boarding Commission Summer Leadership Summit. So as council's probably aware, Planning Department, they clerk eight advisory boards, so they have a huge workload with their advisory boards. Most of those are connected in some way in terms of the work. So the idea is that they will bring those boards together this summer and have a conversation with those board members to try to coordinate, collaborate their work. So really excited to see Planning and Urban Design take the lead on that initiative, and Councilwoman Roni.
Thank you, Ben. I just wanted to add, and maybe you could confirm this for the full council, but it's gonna be more than just the advisory boards under PUD. I understood it might also include SACE, I guess we're calling it now, or SACE, and the African American Heritage Commission, and potentially a couple others. But it won't just be the ones under Planning and Urban Design.
That's a, that's a good question, Councilwoman Roni. Let me confirm that, include that in the follow-up document, just to be sure. But if Maggie made up the answer, actually.
Yes, Councilwoman Roni, you are correct. There's, there's, they're inviting other members from other different committees that, that might, they might coordinate together. So yes, there are other committees that will be invited as well.
Yeah, I don't think this requires a follow-up. I just wanted council to know that there will, it will be more than just those eight, and we'll be discussing that at Boards and Commissions.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. And I think with that, I'll turn it back over to Rachel, I believe. Yes.
That's correct. So June 18, we'll have back-to-back Housing and Community Development Committee, followed by Equity and Engagement Committee. HCD starts at 10:00 AM and has two key items. First is an update from Emily Ball on the work of the new Continuum of Care Board. Part of that update will include details on the establishment of working groups, as well as upcoming federal funding opportunities. And then the second item on the agenda is an update with the end of the fiscal year on the progress we've made to date on achieving the committee's FY 2024 work plan. And then we'll have a preliminary discussion on items you'd like to see on your FY '25 committee work plan. Then Equity and Engagement, that afternoon, you'll have your standing reparations update from Salah. She'll be noting a lot of the great progress that was made at this past Saturday's retreat, where almost all of the recommendations have now been voted on by the committee, which is a huge effort and a huge body of work. Kudos to the Reparations Commission, as well as to the staff and our facilitator on getting us to that point. And then Dawa Hitch will be providing an update on hybrid meetings, and this is the ARPA-funded project to improve accessibility to, to the work that we do as a city. Lastly, on the agenda, we'll also have for Equity and Engagement, a look back at the accomplishments under your FY '24 committee work plan, and then we'll have some preliminary discussion on items that you might want to see for your FY '25 work plan. That concludes our committee overview. I'll do a quick review of our upcoming eight-week agenda items. So moving into the July 25 meeting, just want to note for that meeting that there will be a 3 o'clock start for an affordable housing work session. That meeting will also include a bond order and action to set the public hearing on the 2024 GEO bond. And under the city manager's report, we'll have two scheduled presentations. One will be from Lou Blaiwice, an update on the state of the airport. And then we'll also receive a presentation from Nathan Moneyham with NCDOT on I-26, mirroring what the Planning and Economic Development Committee will hear earlier in the month. Also want to note that July and August will be in our summer schedule with only one meeting each month. And so the July 25 meeting is happening, and then our next meeting will be August 27. July 23 also includes when the New Hawk Creek conditional zoning has been moved to. So that concludes our eight-week overview, and I will now turn it over to the city manager and Tony McDowell to start the review and discussion on the FY '25 budget.
Thank you, Rachel. Almost there, community and council. We're gonna get that budget across the finish line by June 11, we hope. We are, we are wanting to review the operating and capital budget. We're gonna spend a lot of time, for the most part, on the part of the budget related to compensation that seemed to have been the biggest sticking point. I'm gonna turn it over to Tony very shortly, but I just want to say to council, thank you for the time that you all have put into this budget process. You know, it's not your first rate at the rodeo. You, I mean, you put the time in and the work in every year during this time. However, this has been an extremely challenging budget process this year for a variety of reasons. I'm not gonna go into those in detail. But I also want to extend our gratitude for your your concern, your passion, and your interest around employee pay and compensation. We are grateful that you feel that city employees warrant and deserve to be paid in a manner that is competitive in the marketplace. We even had a lot of community input in terms of support for increasing employee pay. Our only challenge has been, unfortunately, revenue. We have to pay for those increases. And what staff from the city manager's office budget, human resources, and a number of other departments, because it has taken a village, certainly, to address the the operating and the revenue shortfalls that we've had this year. We wanted to present you all with as fiscally responsible budget as possible, and also compensate our staff fairly. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony to provide you all with the discussion. We have some points where we will stop, and we'll have a little bit of discussion, and then hopefully begin with the end in mind. Hopefully, we will get direction from you all if there are additional concerns, different things that you want us to look at before the June 11 meeting. And again, hopefully, we will have enough information that you will feel comfortable adopting the June 11 scheduled action on the budget. Tony, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Campbell, and good morning, mayor and council. Tony McDowell, Finance Director. As Ms. Campbell said, we're here today to talk about the FY '25 budget. Adoption is scheduled for next Tuesday. I think we do have some outstanding items and decisions to make on compensation, and so that's primarily gonna be our focus today. I'm gonna do most of the presenting. We have several folks, though, here from our Human Resources Department, I know, that are on the call, and also some budget staff as well, in case we have to do some modeling of options on the fly. We hopefully can be able to do, do some of that today. So Katie, you can go to the next slide. So key takeaways from today. As you all know, the city manager's budget, proposed budget, was presented to you all back in May. It included a recommendation to increase all employee compensation by 4.11%. There have been a number of additional compensation proposals that have been shared with council over the last few weeks and months from the community. Staff sent out a memo earlier this week that had some analysis, our analysis, related to some of those proposals, and we're gonna go through that a little more today as well with the slides. And then what we really are here today is to seek your direction on compensation in order to be able to complete the budget ordinance and move ahead with adoption as scheduled on June 11. So next slide. So just a quick outline. We're gonna start by kind of looking back at some of the compensation adjustments that we've made in recent years. This is information we've shared with you all earlier in the budget process, but just wanted to remind you all and the community of some of the changes we've made in the last few years, because we have invested a lot of additional resources in employee pay over the last few years. And then we're gonna go into specifically, specifically looking at some of the compensation adjustment options for next year, for the fire pay plan, the police pay plan, and then for all of the other employees, which we kind of group all together under this non-public safety group. And like I said, we're gonna look at some of the options that we've received from the community and our kind of analysis of those that we've done, and then we're also gonna show you all some options that we have developed as well, that we wanted to share with council for your consideration. And then finally, we're gonna talk about how, how we would fund all of this, because almost all of these changes involve some kind of additional resources that would be needed above and beyond what we currently have in the manager's proposed budget. So, next slide, please. So again, you can go to the next slide, Katie. So just a review of the last few years, and we've shown you all this slide before, but compensation really has been the focus of the budget process for the last three or four years. I would call you all's attention to those, those bottom three rows, which are the most recent three fiscal years. And we have made significant investments in compensation. You can see we've averaged somewhere around a 10% increase in compensation over those years. It started in fiscal year 2021, '22, which was the first year where we began implementing some of the Archer study recommendations, so those significant increases then. And there was actually a tax rate increase done at that point to help fund some of that. And we've continued on with increases in the last couple of years as well. So, next slide. And then specifically for the, for the fiscal year, we're wrapping up just now. Just wanted to remind you all again, and again, we've shown you this slide before, some of the changes that we made this year, highlighted by that number at the top there, which is the 5% increase for all employees, with a 6% increase for folks on the APD sworn pay plan. We also made a number of other adjustments that we highlighted on this chart. A couple of them I'll call your attention to now, and it's the certification incentives that we approved, or council approved during last year's budget process for APD and AFD, which in, in the current year, we, there's been significant utilization of that, particularly on the AFD side, with the certification that got approved there. So a lot of folks last year in AFD who received the 5% general increase also got this AFD certification increase as well, which was an additional 5% as well. So again, about $6 million invested in compensation in the current year through, through these adjustments. So, next slide. So just kind of wrap up and summarize again. We've made some significant investments over the last three years. Some of that was funded by a 2-cent property tax rate increase in fiscal year 2021, '22. We've been able to fortunately address, or begin to address anyway, some of our pay issues and challenges in, specifically in public safety with these adjustments. Starting on shift, police officer pay is 27% higher today than it was in fiscal 2021, and firefighter starting on shift pay is about 39% higher. And when I, when I give you all those percentages, that's the base pay. That does not include those additional certification pays that we have added on as well over time. And so I just want to make sure we highlighted that as well. So, next slide. So again, so this next portion of the presentation, we're gonna go through the compensation options to date, the staff proposal from the proposed budget, as well as some of the proposals we've received from the community. We have several slides where we're gonna stop and allow you all to have, to have some discussion and ask us questions. And so I'll go ahead and jump into those, and Katie, you can go to the next slide. So just to begin with, a reminder of the proposal that's in the, the current budget, the recommended budget from the city manager, and that is a 4.11% increase for all staff for compensation. That comes at a cost of about $3.5 million in the general fund, another almost million dollars in our enterprise funds, and then a reminder as well of some of the additional costs that we have absorbed within the budget related to our state-mandated retirement contribution, our healthcare contribution, as well as our plan to reinstate retiree health benefits, hopefully sometime around January of 2025. So that's kind of a quick overview and summary of what's in the current budget that you all received back in May. So we can go to the next slide. So the first proposal I kind of wanted to touch upon was what we're calling staff, well, fire pay plan proposal one. This was in the information you all received earlier this week. And so this is the proposal that was sent by the Asheville Firefighters Association that provided adjustments primarily focused, solely focused on increasing pay for firefighters and senior firefighters at a higher rate than what we had proposed in the budget. So staff took a look at this proposal, and we just want to kind of run through some of, some of the things we found when we did our analysis. First off, this, this would increase starting on shift firefighter pay by about 15%. Would bring them up to a starting rate of 53,144. I think you all have seen the proposal, and the estimated cost of, of the proposal from the Firefighter Association was about $550,000 above what we have currently in the budget. I think it's staff's view of this and analysis, though, we think costs may be higher. And I think if we can go to the next slide, we kind of get into some of the reasons why we were a little concerned with this proposal. And that's because it really only covered and looked at firefighter and senior firefighter pay. And I think, as council knows, in both police and fire sworn employees, they are on what's called a step plan. And as we make adjustments to lower-paid positions within that step plan, those adjustments really have to flow through in some way, shape, or form, all the way through the plans. If you, if we don't do that, you end up with some issues where there's compression, the distance between the steps is thrown out of alignment, and then also the distance between the positions is thrown out of alignment. So if someone promotes from senior firefighter to engineer, right now, there's a certain gap between those positions on the pay plan, and so they get a certain pay increase with the changes that were proposed by the Asheville Firefighter Association. Finance and HR staff would agree that it's, would be difficult to kind of maintain that structure of the pay plan if we were to make those adjustments that were proposed. And so that's kind of the main finding that we had about that program or that proposal, I should say. And I guess I'll kind of summarize there with that last bullet. We think without additional adjustments throughout the, the fire pay plan, it would really compromise that plan, particularly around the current promotional rates and the structure of the plan itself. So we can move on to the, to the next slide, which is our overview of the second proposal that we heard from the community related to firefighter pay, and that is a flat-dollar increase. So instead of providing folks on the fire pay plan a 4.11% increase, we would provide 4,540 we would provide a four four thousand five hundred and forty three dollar increase for each employee. So each employee on that plan will get the same amount. That would boost the lowest paid on shift firefighter pay by about nine point eight percent, which would bring it to fifty thousand seven ninety nine. We ran the numbers on that, and that proposal would cost about eight hundred thousand more than what is currently in the manager's proposed budget. Next slide. So just kind of staff's overview of this proposal. In reviewing it with HR staff, we do believe that this a similar type of proposal like this could potentially be implemented within the fire pay plan. But it would require adjustments to maintain the promotional rates and the structure of the step plan. And we actually have an option that we're going to show you all a little bit later in the presentation that we believe takes this concept of a of a flat dollar amount for firefighters and adjusts it slightly so that it does work within the existing fire fire stack pay plan, and we'll show you all that in a bit. We also highlighted in the analysis that we sent you all earlier this week that this increase would bring on shift firefighter pay above the on shift, the starting on shift police officer pay for both of the proposals that were considered, and we'll show you all those police proposals here in just a minute as well. So Katie, you can go to the next slide, and I think we built in a pause here. If you all want, I can take a moment and let you all discuss the fire proposals specifically, or we can kind of move into police, and I can and then have a discussion after we've gone through those as well. Okay, hearing no questions, I will move on then. All right. So again, similar to the next few slides, there were a couple of proposals that we've heard from the community for police pay that are different than the four point one one percent. One is this idea of doing a flat dollar increase of twenty six hundred dollars for all employees on the police pay plan. This would increase on shift starting pay by five point or five point four eight percent, so about five and a half percent. Would bring that up to about fifty thousand sixty one dollars. I think the staff concern with this particular proposal is once you begin to move further up in the pay plan in the police department, some of the the positions higher up in the in the pay plan would get increases that are actually less than the four point one one that we have currently proposed, specifically when you get to the rank of sergeant and lieutenant. Both of those increases would be, again, less than the four point one one percent. Those in the detective ranks would get four point three percent. And I think our concern here is, given the recruitment and retention issues that we have in police currently, that this could have a negative impact on retention and morale. If those folks higher up in the pay grade receive increases that are that are lower than what's currently been proposed. Cost wise, we looked at this from a cost perspective. This actually is about the same as what's currently included in the manager's proposed budget for the four point one one percent in the police department, and so this wouldn't have a positive or negative impact on on the costs. Councilmember Mosley.
When I focus on the bullet point related to impact on retention and morale, can you speak about that a little bit more? I'm curious if you've had the opportunity to speak to perhaps Chief Lamb or others higher up in the department as well as the Police Benevolent Association, and if so, what have they said in regard to this particular proposal?
Yeah, and I haven't spoken personally with with them. I think what we have heard throughout the process, I think, is that in the police department, the the issues around recruitment and retention really stretch throughout the department. So yes, it's it's having a higher starting salary to to get folks on board, but I think it's also making sure that we retain those experienced folks who are already here, who may look elsewhere and see opportunities to to move to another organization and receive higher pay there. So Ms. Campbell, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I would agree, Tony, with everything that you have said. I have met with the police executive team over the past six to eight weeks regarding the budget and the budget recommendation. And they have said that the four point one one definitely was not enough and that they would prefer a six percent increase. And again, for the reasons that you heard, in terms of the ability to recruit, to get laterals coming into our from, say, the surrounding community to Asheville, that they they needed about a six percent.
Okay, and that actually provides a pretty good lead into the next slide. Okay, you can move on to the next one. So the second proposal for the police pay plan we wanted to highlight for you all was was that six percent increase for all employees, sworn employees on the pay plan, which would be the similar or consistent with the increase provided in the current year. It would bring on shift beginning police officer pay to fifty thousand three oh nine. And again, this salary increases have been identified as one of the strategies that the police department is utilizing to help with recruitment and retention. And the cost of this is would be about three hundred thousand dollars more than what's currently included in the proposed budget. So we can go to the next slide, Katie. And so again, we had a pause here for discussion. If you all want, we can go one more slide, and I will kind of I think that kind of wraps up. Katie, you can go to the next slide. So the the non-public safety employees, we did get a proposal there to do a flat dollar increase of twenty four hundred dollars for all non-public safety employees instead of the four point one one percent. Again, on the the low end of the employee pay that would boost the lowest paid employees pay by about six point three percent, kind of kind of that cutoff point, if you will, where the twenty four hundred becomes less than what folks would get under a four point one one percent proposal is right around fifty eight thousand. So if Council were to go with a twenty four hundred dollar flat rate approach, everyone fifty eight thousand dollars and above would get less than what we have proposed under the four point one one percent recommendation. And again, much like the the comment we made about the the police proposed flat rate adjustment, we do believe this that this would have an impact on retention and morale and recruitment, as well as we look to fill positions in the organization at that kind of mid-level manager level and above. And this actually, in terms of cost, if Council were to implement this, this would actually cost a little bit less than what we currently have included in the budget, and we estimate that to be somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars in savings. So Katie, you can go to the next slide. All right. So I think this is where we would pause. I think after this, we would again kind of get into some of the options that we've looked at since we last talked to you all that we wanted to put on the table. So we'll pause and 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 let Council weigh in, and I see Councilmember Ronnie has her hand raised.
Thank you. Tony, can you let me know? Maybe I missed it. Did we receive this slide deck in advance?
Yes, I believe it was sent out by the City Manager's Office yesterday evening.
Okay.
Jamie texted us that it was coming, and it was sent out last night.
So I know some of the the follow up memos and documents are a little tricky to find, and I know we're referring to materials that the public doesn't have access to. So I'm curious about ways that we can make sure that we're putting things in one place so easy to find. So what I'm going to do is make sure that I am referring to something that everyone has seen and start with the compensation proposals in the follow up sent June fourth. And I'm going to start literally with the end in mind at the bottom. So
I have a question. Kim, before, since you haven't seen this whole presentation, and I think a lot of stuff's going to get addressed. Is there any way we could just see the presentation and then do do each council member's kind of position? Because it's got several more slides, and Deborah has crafted a proposal.
Okay, sure.
I thank you. I just because I just feel like let's not derail Tony. Let's he's on a roll. Get it. Get it all out, and then we'll get going with this. And I will, to your point, Kim, I will say, it is a little, it is a little, now we're getting like memos embedded in memos embedded in memos, so which I which is you got to really sift through. You're not the first person I've talked to that's like, when did we get that information? I'm like, well, you got to click three different places.
The first time, and then you can't follow it because you can't find it when you search your own emails. So there's probably a way that this could go along with our attached documents or the documents that are publicly available for the meetings. I don't know. It's just, it's been a bit much to search agenda links within links.
Yeah, it's been a bit much of a request from you all. So we've done our best to try to keep the information consolidated in the appropriate format that you are accustomed to, but we hear your lesson learned.
I found it, by the way. It's it's just not, it wasn't a blue link, and I see the note that it wouldn't be.
Okay, I think on after that, we can, yeah, move on to the next section, which again, so the so the next, I think it's three or four or five slides, we're going to kind of review some other options that staff has developed that we wanted to put on the table for discussion today, and we move to the next slide. So, starting with the fire pay plan. So again, staff has reviewed the options that were submitted by the community, developed what I think we think is an alternative that that would work within the existing pay plan. And that would be to provide a flat dollar increase of four thousand fifty three dollars for beginning on shift firefighters with a two point five percent separation maintained between the steps in the fire pay plan. And I'll kind of explain what that means here in a second, what what that would do in terms of pay. That would increase the lowest paid on shift firefighters by about eight point eight percent. It would bring them up to fifty thousand three oh nine. And that would achieve parity with the starting on shift police officer pay, assuming that we that Council approved the six percent increase, and we have some charts to to highlight that in in upcoming slides. But I think what what HR and finance staff have discussed this week with this particular plan is that this proposal would allow us to still maintain the distance between the steps within the pay plan and also the distance, hopefully, between promotional rates as well. So when you move from a firefighter to a senior firefighter, from senior firefighter to engineer, this helps us maintain what I would call the integrity of the step plan. Now, what it does mean is as you go through the plan, and if you're a longer tenured employee in the fire department who is, let's say, further along in the steps as a senior firefighter, you're going to actually get a little more than than four thousand fifty three. And so the the idea is that as we go up the steps, that that amount increases by two and a half percent between each step. So if you're a firefighter step zero, you get forty thousand or four thousand five oh three. If you're a firefighter step one, let's say, you get two and a half percent more than that. And so again, that helps maintain, if we're going to continue to utilize a step plan in the fire department for pay, we're going to have to come up with a plan that will allow us to maintain that structure. And we think this alternative would allow us to hopefully achieve some of the objectives in terms of increasing firefighter pay and also maintain the integrity of that fire pay plan. The cost of this is actually the same as the the earlier proposal that we looked at for four thousand five forty three an employee, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars more than what's in the current manager's proposed budget. On the next one, next slide, the police pay plan, and I won't go through this one again, because this is actually the same proposal that we talked about earlier, that's the six percent increase for APD sworn officers. Again, we'll bring that on shift starting pay up to fifty thousand three oh nine, which would be the same as the fire proposal on the previous slide. And again, I won't go through all of the bullets here, and just a reminder that that does have a cost of about three hundred thousand dollars, and you'll see in the table that we have coming up, kind of a summary of the costs for all these proposals. But just a reminder that this one does have a an increased cost as well. So and then on the next slide.
Just a quick, wait, a quick clarification on fire. Can you go back to that fire slide? It has the flat rate. What does it do to everybody else in fire, like all the way up to the top? What's it?
Yeah, so it's a great question. So the so again, the firefighter one step zero will get four thousand fifty three. If you, as you go up through the firefighter steps, they will get two and a half percent more than that. And then as you go from firefighter to senior firefighter, those increase as well. And so the dollar amounts do go up, I think. And someone from HR can correct me if I'm wrong on this. I think in terms of percentage increases for all folks in the fire department, that puts folks somewhere between this eight point eight percent and I think six to seven percent. But if there's someone who has that data open that can confirm that for me, that would be great.
Yeah, I just so we don't, we, yeah, and I know looking at their step plan, it would probably further confuse this conversation, but just thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is. The step plan is very, it's very complicated to make adjustments like this when you're dealing with step plans, for sure. Okay, so the policeman, okay, so then, yeah, just a quick chart to kind of show you all where where we would land with with those two options we just discussed. Discussed, it would bring police and fire first step on when they first graduate the academy and they start on on shift, their pay would be the same. And again, we also want to highlight the increases over the last few years as well. You can see, again, going back to twenty twenty one, beginning police pay was thirty seven thousand, and fire was just under thirty four. And they'll vote, they would both be at a little over fifty if this, if Council were to approve these particular options. So, next slide. So the final piece of the puzzle, if you will, are the are the non-public safety employees. The option that we've developed here is to do either the twenty four hundred a person increase or four point one one percent, whichever is greater. And so we think, again, the benefits of that are, it does increase the pay of lower paid employees more than what we had originally planned under the four point one one percent. It would bring them up by six point three percent. It also maintains the increase for employees above fifty thousand, fifty eight thousand dollars and and more. So it wouldn't have that negative impact on morale. In terms of the numbers, approximately five hundred employees would get the twenty four hundred dollar increase. That would be the bigger amount for them. And then there's about three hundred employees that would get the four point one one percent. And this particular option comes at a cost of about a hundred and sixty thousand in the general fund. Because we do have, obviously, employees on these pay plans and enterprise funds, I did want to highlight there is a cost there as well of about a hundred and fifty thousand spread across water, stormwater, parking. We we would make adjustments within those funds. We don't think we need to go back and make any additional fee changes in order to be able to to be able to afford it within those funds. But I did just want to highlight there is a cost outside the general fund for this particular proposal as well. So, next slide. So just quickly before I wrap up, so just some pros and cons to the options that we just went through. For on for starting on shift police officers, it would be a six percent increase. For firefighters, it would be eight point eight. The the fire plan that outlined would ensure similar increases across all classifications on the fire play pay plan and avoid compression and potential disruption of that plan. It would increase pay for all non-public safety staff who make less than fifty eight thousand by more than what staff had originally included in the budget. And it would also not reduce the planned increase of four point one one percent for for any staff at the city. And then next slide, we did just want to end with highlighting a couple of maybe cons to this. Obviously, this comes at a cost, and it would require either a property tax increase or greater use of fund balance or some combination of both of those. And, you know, we are making adjustments this year. The the options that we've laid out are different from what we have done historically. We've we've historically almost always utilized a percentage based approach. So our HR staff is going to have to review the all these things. And so if we moved ahead with these adjustments, there may be some unintended consequences around compression that our HR staff would have to review and potentially come back and and discuss further with with us during the fiscal year, if there is a significant fiscal impact. We don't think there will be, but we definitely want to highlight that that review needs to take place. And then I think we have another slide which gets us to, yeah, the dollars. So it wouldn't be a budget presentation without a big table with dollars in it. And so we did want to highlight in 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 summary here that the cost of what we're proposing. So we want, and we also wanted to break it down by each each option, so you all could see the impact. If you were to raise taxes, the total cost of the three proposals is about one cost of the three proposals is about 1.26 million dollars, uh, which would equate to about a 60, a .63 cent tax rate increase, uh, which for the average homeowner would be about $22 more a year uh, in property taxes. Uh, we did just want to also highlight at the bottom, uh, if, if council had interest, if you, you all know that we are proposing some fund balanced usage in the budget, uh, if council wanted to increase that property tax rate uh, to an even one penny on the tax rate in, instead of the .63, that would provide some additional money uh, that we, that we could go back into fund balance. Uh, and, and if we went that route, that would be another $13. So the total impact to uh, city taxpayers would be around $35 uh, for that, for that particular proposal.
So I think we. If we don't, if we, if we don't go above the .63 cents and don't address fund balance, fund balance would still be up at the 13.3%, right? Is that, it would just be unchanged from the manager's proposed budget, correct?
Yes, that's our estimate right now. Correct.
Tony and other staff, I just want to say a big thank you. I feel like we and myself have put out a lot of questions. There's been a lot of requests from the community, but what you did here was boil it down in the way that I really needed to see. Um, because you're, I was concerned about the steps in both of the first responder teams and um, and you managed to fix that. I really, really appreciate you all being able to take all the input that was out there and come together on this kind of suggestion and recommendation. I think it looks great and um, it's the expertise I needed because, you know, we're out here trying to, we're reading spreadsheets from different groups and we're just kind of doing simple math that this amount times this hour equals. But there's so many more layers that we just don't have the expertise to really analyze. So just a lot of appreciation, Tony. Thank you. I know I was bugging you as early as seven o'clock in the morning. And uh, I just wrote.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you for saying that. And yeah, there, there is a lot of complexity to this, particularly on the public safety pay plans with those steps and being able to maintain the integrity of that. So.
I have a quick clarifying question. In what you're sharing here, Tony, with this additional for fund balance, does that um include the full amount that had previously been proposed? So say this, in, in this proposal, zero fund balance would be used?
No, 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 no. So we, the, the proposed budget included about $7 million in fund balance usage. This would not replenish or come close even to replenish.
So this was just like the, the 740,000 wasn't, i- is like a rounding up. The logic that frame that is to round up to one as opposed to fill a gap or some other what, what's the logic behind that to round up to?
Well, look, Tony, just to, just to feed into this, what would it take to bring us to 15%? Like what's the difference between three point, 13.3 and 15%? I realize that $740,000 is a little bit. I don't know if that brings us up to like 13.6 um, or, or what, but.
Yeah. So, so, so great question. So, so the um, to bring us fully back to 15%, we would need about $3 million uh, added to the fund balance, which would be about a penny and a half uh, tax rate increase. Um, and kind of to your question, council member Almond, yeah, I mean, we, we essentially, you, you know, it, it, we, we can, this would present an opportunity if you all wanted to do a one penny tax rate increase where we could begin at least, and granted, it's, it's not a large amount, but it would begin at least moving us toward having fund balance back up closer to 15% or, yeah, 15% so that we would perhaps be able to minimize the tax rate increase next year. We could spread out and do a little bit this year and then have to do a little bit less next year to get us back to 15%. That's kind of the logic. And then again, yes, it was very much the you know, we'll round up to a full penny. So it's, you know, uh, so that, that was kind of our thinking on that.
Just wanted to clarify to make sure I'm understanding what you're proposing fully. Thank you.
Okay, so acknowledging that we will have ongoing conversations beyond this budget cycle about wage and compensation. Um, I'm going to start and shift to this presentation on slide 18. Um, talking about the non-public safety. I think this recommendation for 2,400 flat. What we haven't looked at is that 2,400 flat for also the base of public safety. Right? Because the public safety recommendations that we see on slide 16 and above are based on a 4.11. Is that correct?
Can we go back?
Yeah, I was gonna say that will help me if we can go back to the slide being referenced.
Well, if we're looking at um, the, the original um, staff analysis numbers, one and two for fire and police for public safety, these are on the 4.11%. Actually, it would help to go to slide 18, which is the one I was recommending. Um, this 2,400 for all non-public safety, we're still using the 4.11% as the base for the other proposals, right?
Yes. So when you're, when you're saying that, I guess the, the question is when we arrived at that estimated cost at the bottom, what, what did we, what did we change? What variables did we change to come up with that? And I think the answer is yes, this, this is looking at this proposal alone by itself and what would that impact be on the budget if all things else, everything else is held constant? This is that kind of, does that answer your question?
It does. So this is what I'm, what I'm curious about and what I'd really like to support is 2,400 non-public safety as we see on slide 18. 2,600, which is what we see on slide 15, but for all public safety as the base. And then going up to slide.
When you say that base, you, what does that mean when you say the base? So you just mean 2,600?
I'm almost done. So on slide 11, when we look at the staff analysis proposal number one, fire pay plan, and I believe this actually may be, okay, number 10. So it's like 10 and 11 together. This was built around a 4.11, not a flat rate base. So if we take 2,400 for non-public safety, 2,600 base for public safety entirely, and then have proposals number one on slide 15 for APD gets them above 50K and then proposal number one for the fire pay plan on slide 10 and 11. That's the number that I would be more inclined to support. And if I, if I knew better what that number was, then it would inform what kinds of costs we could delay or cuts that we would need to make to work with our existing resources in a more responsible way.
Oddly enough, I think I understood what Kim was saying and I agree with it.
Somebody explain it. I don't, I don't understand at all. Maybe internet, you could try to.
Maybe you can run it again, Kim.
Yeah, Kim. So to try to not have so many of the slides, I'll just start with this. We have step number one, 2,400 flat for all non-public safety. Step number two, 2,600 for all public safety, including police and fire. And then step number three, build the 1825 floor that's in the actual fire department recommendation. Acknowledging it will cause some compression issues and we'll have ongoing conversations after the county tax revow around how we work long-term towards our pay plan and pay equity. But this year, working with the resources we have, 2,400 non-public safety, 2,600 public safety, and the firefighter's request in staff analysis proposal number one on slide 10.
The, the only thing that I want to ask is. I'm sorry, man. What would be, what are we trying to achieve? And, and I think that that would help us tremendously is what is we try, what are we trying to achieve with the, with the, with your strategy, Kim?
Number one, the cost of living for the, the folks that are interacting with the public the most. So I, I think when I've talked with some of my colleagues, the concept of the 2,400 annual versus 4.11, which I think we're not even really talking about anymore, but that means 200 additional dollars a month, being able to pay for things like groceries, right? 2,600 makes it so that we're not pitting as much of the staff against each other as we work from where we are to where we need to be. But it's taking everyone up 2,600 in public safety instead of 2,400, which helps with getting the APD number over 50K. And that makes it easier for us to get um, fire to 1825 using our existing resources.
And do you have like the, the costs associated with those three things that you mentioned? You know, how like each of the others slide says it'll cost an additional 800 or do you have that number?
No, so I, I'm looking at the same things that you are as far as like the firefighters association recommendation and what staff has provided to us. And I normally would say, let's just go with this slide 10, except for the um, when one of, one of us brought up, is this built on a 4.11? And if so, that that means that just the fire department leadership would be receiving a different pay increase than all the other staff across the, the organization. And that's why I was like, oh, should step proposal number one for the 2,600 for APD be applied to public safety? And that may help with organizational um, equity when we're working towards our goals.
So I, I mean, a couple of thoughts. Um, one result of that, so first of all, we wouldn't be fleshing out how to do the 1825. You do the 2,600 flat for all public safety, but we wouldn't, you know, staff would have to figure out how to flesh out the 1825. It does bring firefighter pay to 53,144 and police would be at 50,300. So they would be, or they would be a, not even, they would be just below like 50,050. So they would be different and police is asking for 6%. So I, I, I'm a little like, I, I, I'm a little comfortable with boosting fire so much higher than police and honoring fires request, but not honoring police request. So that, that's just a, you know, an issue. And I know the other problem and why Deborah proposed a compromise is we are not paying competitively for our um, uh, management positions, our leadership positions, and we're having a hard time recruiting for some of our, for some of our vacancies. So I'm sensitive to that and I want to listen to the manager around that concern.
Do we have? Do we have info about 6% for public safety? And then.
Yeah, Tony.
24 or 26 flat for everybody else.
This is essentially what I was asking yet, yesterday, Tony, and I think my question didn't get through. I was looking for that breakdown on that final slide because it would, it would answer this. Like what is the savings with the flat? And then we can get to that number, then build on the pieces that we want. Um, and it's hard to do that if you're backing it out all the time.
Well, if you go to the one where the, it has the flat for the, for this for non-public safety, it has the flat and 4.11 combo, doesn't it say right there how many get the flat? So you could do the math. And I mean, I think you could. Could you do the math? No, no, there's one slide that says how many employees would be getting the flat versus the 4.11.
That's it.
Uh, the 294 employees that get, so that'd be the, not the.
And so then the question.
Number we need to look at?
I'm wondering, and then maybe I'm just missing it going back and forth. Do we have an amount given to us as far as cost for 6% for public safety across the board? And then this 2,400 for non-public safety. I guess I'm saying a hybrid. So a person.
And then what about, um, for what about fire? Are you doing 2,600?
I'm meaning 6% for police and fire since they're both starting.
It's in one of our follow-ups. I'll see if I can find it because it was.
Oh, I think we have that number.
Okay.
You, it was in one of the memos.
Yeah. From Tuesday or something. But like what can I get?
It was in the really long one.
Tony, can we get that?
I think.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, I've been trying to follow along with the conversation. So what, what numbers do we?
So if we plug in 6% right now.
For fire and police.
For fire and police.
Okay.
What, what's?
Sworn police.
Just, yeah, we're, we're only doing sworn mayor for.
We're, we're doing that. And, and, and maybe we can go to the, if we go to the chart, uh, Katie, that might help. Uh, all right. So the, the 6% for police is there. So that's, that's the $300,000 cost. The 6% for fire. We're, we're doing that.
We're, we're running the numbers, just.
Running the numbers.
Just a few minutes.
And then you're looking at hopefully a savings of going to 2,400 across the board for all non-public safety, right? Right.
Yes.
Yeah. So the, the cost of doing 6% for fire is 500,000. Writing down these numbers. And then what was the other, what was the final number we wanted to look at?
6%.
400 for all.
Twenty four hundred for all non-public safety. Is that less or more?
That's more than fire because the twenty four hundred gets us a a hundred K. So it's seven hundred, it's five hundred K plus three hundred K minus a hundred K.
Sorry, we're working on that. Let me let me just take a moment here to.
I was gonna say, Tony, you may want to mute.
Double check, double check.
Yes, please.
Sounds like Antonet, you're what you're asking about would be seven hundred thousand dollars more than the manager's proposed budget rather than this one called two six.
Right, okay.
I got you. Okay, all right. If we're on the same page right now. So so the twenty four hundred dollars uh per employee, non-public safety, that's that's in our presentation. That's actually a decrease of a hundred thousand dollars. So if we did six percent um for fire, six percent for police and twenty four hundred dollar flat amount for all non-public safety, that would be a cost of seven hundred thousand.
And Tony, is that twenty? So the manager's second proposal here had twenty four hundred or four point one one. But you are saying the four point one one isn't in the number you just gave us, just two twenty four flat for everybody else.
That's correct.
And and I want to also advocate on behalf of what the mayor just said in terms of the recruitment challenges that we are having with supervisors, mid mid managers and above. It is as hard right now and most of it is is based on salaries to recruit people to this community for those positions. And we have a number of vacancies.
Yeah, that's.
How much is that? How how much is that then if you bifurcate the non-public safety? You do twenty four hundred like you proposed and the combo where if you make below a certain amount, you know.
What's that?
What's the difference? You get you save a hundred grand if you do the whole flat rate, but what do you pay if you don't? You do the hybrid.
So if we do the hybrid, I think the only the only number that would change on this page is the if we do six percent for fire, their their cost is going to go down to five hundred. So it would be five hundred thousand for a six percent increase in fire, three hundred thousand for a six percent increase in police. And then a hundred and sixty thousand dollar cost for the hybrid uh model that we suggested for non-public safety. So that would be, I'm trying to do the math real fast.
Nine sixty.
Nine sixty.
It's nine six. So the swing, the swing to go to the hybrid is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's the swing.
Yes.
And the cost for employee morale and retention and recruitment.
And that is.
Did I follow?
Jump into sorry, but let's do hand raising. Maybe I feel like there's a lot of talking over or I'm just gonna jump in. Um, I feel pretty strongly about what De- Deborah just mentioned. Um, I don't know if anyone can state, how long have we been vacant a stormwater engineer? Over a year? When I think about our increasing climate change, the one of the most important things that we can do is advance and and update the way that we're approaching our stormwater. That's a very technical job with advanced degrees. And they compete in the private sector. So when we start to pit employees against each other in these pay ranges, I just get very uncomfortable. We are without a HR employee. I would bet that everyone on this call feels a little frustrated at how late in the game we're looking at very, very technical proposals. Hey, maybe if we had a top of the line HR director, we could be looking at something different, but we're struggling to fill that position. I understand that we need to support all of our employees and our employees at the bottom. And I think that a lot of the proposals we're seeing here are bringing up pay. But to do that at the expense of having the technical skills in our senior positions feels uh very, very concerning for me. So I I like this hybrid approach to the non-public safety where we don't have to. How how long do we want to be without a transportation director? Another year? We can't keep doing that. I think that um I I like the hybrid approach for the non-safety.
Maggie, you mean hybrid, the either or whichever is graded greater?
Yeah, where staff proposed the flat fee or the four point one one, whichever is greater.
Same. To say that too, uh that the one question I want to ask is because I do support the staff's option. But maybe someone can give me an idea of the the what the staff has actually uh uh given us. How does that? How does staff that that sort of address the concerns of the fire department and the police department? As far as what does that do for their request? I mean, does it sort of gives them gives them close to what they want, what all of them want? So your program is a fire department and police department, pretty much what they asked for. So is that what you're saying? So if they if we're giving them what they're asked for, why are we trying to?
Not not exactly what they asked for.
Okay.
Except for um APD, we came in somewhere, we think really, really close, maybe ninety percent of what fire requested. The reason that we had concerns about fire is because of the complicated step plan that they had and the significant, I shouldn't say significant, but concern about compression.
Yeah. And one thing I would like to say, I was uh I was speaking with some council people earlier. And and I know that uh the plan, basically, we start talking about police salary versus fire fat salary or whatever. Uh, basically, if you look nationally, nationally, police salaries are somewhere around three thousand more than fire uh salaries, that's sort of, you know, the norm. So if we're talking about trying to get them exactly the same or worry about one getting over the other uh then place basically for me, I think uh that should not even be an option with the fire making more than the police. Like I said, because that's always been a position that's usually three thousand over fire. So we need to take that into consideration too.
And and with with the staff kind of compromises, they start out at the same level and then they go into their own individual pay plans.
Exactly.
That whatever those type plans are.
Yes.
They will get those increment increases over time.
Yes, I just want to say I I support the steps.
Thank you. Sage?
Well, and this is the reason I asked for um the compensation plan that we did a few years back. Because it it speaks to the importance of these steps. And even when I met with the firefighters association, they mentioned that the gap between, I hope I'm getting this right. The gap between firefighter and the first step of senior firefighter has such more responsibility, but only comes with the one dollar that some are choosing, one of the ones that we met with chose not to advance to the senior step because of the additional responsibility and lot. You know, not great matching pay. So I I really think those steps are probably really important and why we needed you all to analyze it across all of them. Um, and I I really like that we're able to get both AFD and APD to that fifty thousand mark. I've been hearing APD say that for a while. And it's an incredible growth in AFD for the last three or four years. I mean, I remember I've only been on council one term and we started at getting them to fifteen, which was that thirty one thousand. So we're coming a long way. I know it's not perfect, but we also can't just raise taxes across the board while also going into our savings. And it's just, it's a lot. So I think this is a really great solution. Again, just um the thoroughness of understanding. Yes.
Sage, will you clarify? Are you liking the one that results in the eight hundred thousand where staff has kind of worked through all the steps but gets that lowest paid off firefighter above that fifty thousand?
Yes.
Or are you liking the six percent, which is five hundred thousand dollars? No, you like the one that dresses.
I like what the staff has has put forth as their recommendation at the end. It gets APD and AFD some parity as well. You know, if we want to talk about getting AFD higher, then I want to talk about getting APD higher too. That's kind of where I'm at. So I don't want to say that one deserves less or more, but I think that these two departments as our key first responders and other other departments too, but need to have some parity for recruitment and um just fairness.
Yeah, I think that's what Sandra was saying too.
Looks like Kim is asking about live stream.
It seems like the live stream might have just gone down.
Yeah, I just heard from AFD.
We'll we'll check on it. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And and one thing I would like to say, when Esther just said that, because the reason I I make that decision, I'm not trying to hit one against the other, but that is a uh national, you know, number. And this is what and if you look at, if one department's now over s- over sixty officers and the other one pretty much is either that should sort of give you an idea that one position is a little bit more difficult to fill than the other. So I think we should all take that into consideration.
I I'd be curious, um. I I hear uh we're having a lot of discussions about what our people deserve. And I agree that we need our people to be paid better. I think that there's a lot of focus on fire and police for good reasons, as you were saying, Sandra. We have really hard to fill positions, as others have stated. The level of danger in these jobs uh is different than, you know, an office worker per se. I also do feel like it's important to say in this process, there is no, you know, sanitation union. And I would love to see what that proposal would have been, but we don't have that community infrastructure in our in our in Asheville. And, you know, I I think that, you know, the folks who are doing out digging trenches for our water pipes. I I think that we're seeing a lot of focus on fire and police for good reason. I'm not saying I don't agree with that, but there's something in the process we've been having that feels a little unbalanced and feels a little like reacting to the outside, then stepping back and going, what are our goals? Where are we going? Who needs what? I think all of our employees, especially those who aren't being paid super well at the bottom, need more resources, period. And I just feel like I I needed to say that in this process because it feels a little tail wagging the dog that as an elected, our our discussions less than a week before we're making a decision are about proposals exclusively from the community when I don't know, it just, I'm not saying I don't support our people paying more. It just feels like it's a little unbalanced in that um I haven't heard us really start from like, what are our values for who we pay and how? So I just need to say that piece. I'll also say that I think um amidst a tumultuous conversation over the last several weeks. Deborah, I think that you've heard the goals that we're trying to articulate, where we want to see these really hard to fill positions paid more. I really appreciate this non-public safety approach where we're addressing compression and making sure that we aren't picking certain wage employees over others because all of our least paid important part of this. The part that we haven't talked about on this call is how are we going to pay for it? Because the reality is when our manager gave us a proposal several weeks ago, she said, hey, here's a proposal, you can't afford it. Period. Her recommendation was to use fund balance and we're talking a lot about what we want right now. But let's talk about how we're going to pay for it because that to me is a very big driver. There's a lot of things I want. There's a lot of things I want us to spend more money on. I think they pay is a part of that as well. Um, but where are people's comfort zones with, are we going to raise taxes? Are we going to go into our savings? I know I've talked to several individuals and I I I'd love us to talk about that part of this puzzle too, because to me I can't land on what I want for us without I have an understanding of how I'm going to pay for it. They can't be bifurcated. So I I'm not even at a point where I can land on saying, yes, I love the manager's approach here. Although I think you did a good job figuring out what the spending looks like, like I can't land on that without knowing where we're going to figure out how to pay for it because they have to go together for responsibility sake. All right, thanks. They're a little more soapboxy than usual, but I just feel like this is an intense conversation. I want to put that all out there.
I agree, Maggie, with so much of that. I think part of it is that we're we're just in a difficult position where we can't afford everything and we can't raise taxes to cover the fund balance and everything. If we did, it's it's significant. What I heard was three and a half to four cents. And I I know we've been learning that other governments across the state and even locally are having to raise taxes. It seems pretty common. I am worried about us being one of the most expensive places to live. I am, I have become comfortable with what is on right now with the total amount of doing the one penny for the two million. Because I know that I've expressed that I would prefer to use fund balance than raise taxes, knowing full well that that is a risky step. But that we will have to address it next year with revow and correct it because I'm not comfortable long term going under that fifteen percent. But I've also heard from many of you that you are uncomfortable using fund balance at all. And this to me looks like at least a step in that direction where we're saying. I know it's it's not as deep a cut into fund balance as we thought it was. It's still some. I'm guessing this is around closer to fourteen percent or thirteen point seven five, just random. But um but the impact to the taxpayer with this and the bonds is going to be about a hundred and thirty five dollars a year. And then if you're in the bid, you know, that could go significantly up. And those are already pushing high numbers for me. So I'm worried. I'm still over here thinking we use some of this fun balance. We do this one cent tax increase, we get these pay plans sorted out and keep some of that savings or whatever back for the fund balance. So I really like the slide that was just posted. That's where I'm at right now, if that helps.
So 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 Maggie, there there is, uh and I'm gonna need Tony to chime in uh for this year with a um any kind of salary increase. We have to use fund balance. And um what we are discussing is the, you know, kind of the the map. And the amount that we landed on, we would need additional if we go above the four point one one that was recommended originally in the manager's budget. Opposed budget, sorry. And Tony, please correct me if I'm mistaking that or.
No, you no, you didn't mistake that at all.
And so where we.
I didn't, I did not follow what you said, Deborah, but I think I already followed what Tony had presented, so assuming there's no. I mean, I I, yeah, anyway, I'm assuming that the working assumption was the manager's proposed budget and that all these are variations, um building on that. So the one penny would further off, it would it would offset some of the use of fund balance that were that's in the manager's budget. So so it it's just like Sage said, instead of thirteen point three, dropping down to thirteen point three percent fund balance. It's something slightly above that and maybe you know what it is, but.
We we did, we did a quick calculation. It looks like it's around thirteen point seven percent.
It'd be helpful for me, um, and I feel like for anybody out there watching. If staff could just remind us, I think that a lot of us um are really hopeful and curious that when there's a revow, it can have some impact. Can we just do the one O one of what that assumption is that if we why we're thinking a revow would be supportive to help us meet our budget while um not having to have as much of a tax increase burden on our residents? Anybody? If I could do it in like a thirty second, I would. It's pretty complex. But if someone can kind of just get that out there for this discussion, that'd be helpful.
Tony, can you?
Sorry.
That's all right. Yeah, I can try to do revow one O one and and I may not get completely what you're asking.
Tony, you had a, and and I you had a good slide at our last meeting where you showed what the projections look like for the for the revenue neutral new rate and how far down it would drop. Just, I because I know Maggie was not able to see that and so I wonder if that.
Yeah, and I think that's in some of the memos that we've sent out and and I'm I'm sorry, I won't remember those numbers off the top of my head. But essentially, the concept is is that, you know, we're going to go through revow. Property only gets revowed every four years. And so over that time, the value of properties have gone up. And so when the tax collector and tax assessor go out and take a look at properties around the county, uh they will they will increase those values to reflect market, new market realities. And so often what happens during revaluation is that property values go up somewhere between twenty to twenty five or thirty percent. And so what the state legislature requires is every time that happens, all local governments within that county have to recalculate their tax rate and show folks, the community, what's what's called a revenue neutral tax rate. And what that means is that's that's the rate that we would reduce our current rate by to kind of keep us whole. Compared to, you know, once we have these new values and they've gone up twenty, twenty five percent, we can lower our rate. And so we did calculate that in the information we sent out to council a few weeks ago or a month ago. And again, I can't remember off the top of my head what that is, but it's lower than the forty point three cents that we that we currently charge. And so often what happens during those years is uh there's a discussion at the council level about do we set the rate at revenue neutral or do we set it slightly above? Um, and so often what can happen is you can keep the same tax rate, let's say forty point three cents that we're at now, but bring in additional revenue. And again, that ultimately ends up being a policy decision that council has to make and you all make that as a part of the budget process next year. And that you'll also make it in conjunction with hopefully the bonds passing in November uh and any additional tax rate adjustments that might come along with that. So.
And so for the property owner, when we, in that policy dynamic, if their home is valued more, which I would be suspect expecting many in our community are, what does that mean for what they're out of pocket?
Yeah, I mean, it 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 means taxes go up. I mean, if you if if the value goes up, the rate stays the same, then yes, property owners are going to pay more in property taxes after after that adjustment.
So when we say that we'd wait till next year because the revow, the citizens are still going to pay for it. It's just a matter of if we did it by a tax increase or if it was done by reevaluation.
Yes, and and I think one of the advantages of waiting to next year as well is, you know, obviously, it's like it's been four years since property was looked at. And so the county assessor's office is taking a new look at values. And so those values are going to more accurately reflect what current market is. And so hopefully, you you know, that will represent a more equitable distribution of the tax rate across the community as opposed to relying on the values now that we currently have, which are four years old.
I appreciate that. And I know that you all kind of went through that before, but it's just uh pretty critical information in the dynamic of what we're discussing. Thanks, Tony.
And and so Mayor, as we um we said earlier, is is there any additional direction you want to give us in preparation for your discussion and hopefully action on Tuesday regarding the budget? And in particular, I think again, the outstanding issue seems to be a topic session.
Well, I think ideally, if we have, if we, if everybody kind of knows where they're landing and we can give you that indication, that would be great. I did hear from some folks about the the final manager's recommendation. And Tony, maybe it'd be helpful to put it back up, that last slide that had the uh what it's going to cost and our proposal for paying for it. I heard Sage say she she can live with a penny if it means implementing those pay increases. I heard Sandra say she liked the staff's proposal and she's holding up a finger, which is one penny. And that and I I don't, I don't know if anybody else is, you know, I just to chime in. I I I really appreciate the hard work. I'm so glad that we've, I I know it's been kind of a torturous process. We're all involved um and a lot of conversation and trying to figure this out, but I do. But I do, I do really appreciate that this plan incorporates a focused attention on our lower paid employees, trying to bring them up per per their hourly rates and try to get them more fairly compensated. Again, this is a work in progress. You guys have done some aggressive work in the last two years. This is another aggressive move and I think it's needed. And I'm betting next year is going to be another aggressive time for pay increases. So, so I, you know, I appreciate that. And I hate that we, you know, the, well, I guess the good financial times of COVID ironically have come to us getting halt. So I, and I don't know if anyone else is ready to chime in, whether they're okay with this. But I, I, I do like the one penny proposal that we're looking at here on slide twenty-seven that, that addresses these wage issues and tries to do a little bit to address fund balance, which we're going to have to be committed to doing the remainder next year. So that's, that's only gets you three, Deborah. Sorry, say it again, Shanika.
I'll chime in really quick. There's a lot of information in the last few weeks to digest on top of regular responsibilities. I mean, what I'm looking at right now, it sounds okay, but in comparison to what many groups have presented us, you know, in advocacy for the lowest paid workers, you know, I like to consider that as well. Because I've been at or below the poverty level before and working my tail off to no end. Sometimes it's been a, a great sacrifice. So I always like to make those considerations with a lot of deep thought. So, um, yeah, it, it takes time. I don't think I've got this information. I may have overlooked it to even digest it. But yeah, it's going to take a little time to digest everything. And considering we have, we have to figure out how to pay for things, that's a hard decision to make, right? Because, you know, we can't eat everything, but then we can't pitch it to the community to pay either. Because we don't know where they are. You know, we're all trying to recover from COVID and just recover from daily living. A lot of people are caught spurned and asking for forgiveness from foreclosure and stuff. That's the reality, you know? The reality is e- either way we go, somebody's going to have to eat it. But do we have more options and creativity within our organization to recoup? We probably have more options than a homeowner would. So I'll have to sit with it because this is more, this is more realistic to me than, you know, just what's on paper. Like lives are at stake, you know, people remaining in the city, that's at stake. Their medical decisions, whether they send their children to college or not, you know, we have to take all that into consideration. And I want to do that with a fine tooth. And I wouldn't mind doing it with advocacy groups. I don't know why we balk at the idea of advocacy groups coming forward to help us think things through. Like, are we working for the organization or are we elected for the people? So, um, appreciate all the hard work and I look forward to conversations so we can get to a yes vote on Tuesday or maybe another date if we have to pause.
Yeah, I'm feeling a lot of what you just said, Shanika. Thanks for contributing, saying what you did. I feel, I feel a lot of heaviness in all of this conversation in this budget too. And I feel the heaviness and if we're gonna take care of paying our employees so we can have awesome services and deliver the public what they pay for with their taxes, I think paying more is, to our employees is really important. I like that this budget centers that. The public's going to have to pay at some point. And it's either sooner with, I mean, really, if we delay gaining new revenue till next year, it will cost us more in the long run because we'll already start with dipping further and further into fund balance. So we're just going to have to make up another year's worth if we delay longer. So I, I like seeing a proposal that has some, some approach to a tax increase this year. Hard conversations, though. I'm glad we're having it together.
You know, one thing to consider.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, one thing to consider too is that underlying unknown around sales tax. I know we're budgeting for it to be flat. You know, in, in my tenure with Deborah as city manager, there have been budgets where, you know, we save more. We left money in fund balance because they outperformed. And so the potential for that is still there. We may not need as much as we think or plan because Deborah is a conservative planner when it comes to these things, which is great. And I can't tell, I'm really sensitive to both what Shanika and Maggie just said. And I, it was hard for me to understand if the concern is if we're paying employees enough or if the concern was the taxes that would fall on the community for us to pay the employees better. And, but I, I want to make sure the ground level is still known, like we are still living wage step, right? We're not abandoning that program. We, the proposal that staff put forth has both the flat rate and the percentage. So it gives more to those making less than fifty-eight. Fifty-eight is a random number, but I get it. So it almost sounds like they're addressing the inequity that we're speaking of as far as applying wage increases instead of just the flat percent. So I, I guess I'm just feeling like it's a really good compromise with some, some intellect behind how to move forward without messing it up so much that next year we also have to address all the steps that aren't addressed by some of the options put forward, you know? So Maggie, and I get it, you know, we're gonna, we're delaying the inevitable, but sometimes that's important for people's budgets. Maybe sometimes that's just the best we can do. And property tax is still the most progressive way to grow revenue from communities. You know, we've talked about things like food and bev tax and other things. Those are pretty regressive in that they impact those with the lowest incomes more. And this is actually on the higher value of home. And then we also have the layer function of in North Carolina, if you were fifty-five plus, you can apply for some rebate or abatement. This was reminding me, though, did this, neither us nor the county, did, did we do an additional property tax plan like we did in the past where you could apply for some amount of reprieve?
I was going to jump in, Deborah. And counsel, I'm returning you. I think you're referring to the property tax homeowner relief program that the county set up a couple of years ago. The short answer to that question is yes, that program is still in place and the city is still participating, as is the county as well.
Could you talk about the criteria? Because I believe it only applies to the elderly or it's a very narrow window of folks, right? Or am I wrong?
Shanika, there's two plans. So there's the state homestead exemption, which is for income qualified folks that are over sixty-five. That's the one you're talking about. And the, the question I think that Sage had is about the one that the city and the county did separately, which was just based on income qualifications, no age restriction.
And just to be clear, that is still in the budget.
You know, this is kind of what I was, I asked in an earlier question, and sometimes the, the questions are just so complex. Sometimes we don't get, I didn't get the response I was looking for. But the question was trying to target what we're facing for next year in payroll costs. Like thinking out another budget cycle, is that number going to be so significant alongside the correction to the fund balance that this one penny is not enough? I think Maggie was kind of getting at that a little bit too. Like, are we chipping away at an avalanche? Or is it just going to be a similar situation of three and four million? And we don't really know. I don't, I don't feel like I can derive that info.
And, and I think it depends on, again, how much of an increase do we want to make to the existing salaries?
Deborah, how often is an organization the size do a compensation assessment? I'm not saying let's do another study, but how often should we be doing that kind of thing?
We should be doing a full set scale compensation study at least every four to five years. But we should be looking annually at our pay plans and within those pay grades. So you, it, it never, it should never stop.
The other thing we struggle with is that we see, we monitor or compare ourselves to certain cities that we feel of our like size and age or whatever it is demographic. But then other community members or advocates will use different sets. And that's not helping. It's almost like at some point we should just establish, like Maggie said, what are our goals here? What are we trying to be like? And what are those targets so that we know if we're even steadily moving towards them? Or if we're just in this like make or break, save everything, last minute budget cycle every time? Because I really don't know. I think that would help me long term in these kind of discussions.
Well, we, we're hoping that, and we started this process with policy, finance and HR committee talking about compensation. And, and now we've really got to roll up our sleeves and, and really ask ourselves, what, what are our goals? What are we wanting to emphasize in terms of compensation? We introduce, you know, pay for performance such that we truly have a, you know, a budget set aside for those top performers such that we can maintain retention and recruitment and, and be able to, to compensate our highest performers within the organization. But there are a number of other things that we need to focus on. For example, if the philosophy is for those who make whatever, lowest paid, whatever, if that is going to be the philosophy of those individuals get the highest increase or if it's going to be longevity, those people who have been here the longest, or if it's going, you see what I'm saying? Compensation plans are complicated. It's not just math. There's a, I think Sage, you talked about this, there are just layers and layers and layers of, of information, especially the public safety pay plans with steps. And being able to articulate to the employee, if you come into our organization in five years, your salary could potentially be X. That is, you know, I, I think that certainty, again, particularly for those classes of positions are needed, is probably needed throughout the organization. But certainly within the public safety plans, we need to, we need to have a deeper look at those pay plans and not hopefully end up with the, the discussion that, that we are having today. Vagabond discussion, however, it, it has been a lot on staff and I really want to join the mayor in thanking our HR staff, budget and finance staff. This was a heavy lift this year. It was a real heavy lift in terms of all of the information that we had to, to generate. And, and I think they, they did an incredibly good job in terms of turning the information around in a timely manner. And we'll certainly try to do better in terms of distinguishing between all the information that we send you off. We send you a whole lot of information. We, we'll try to clarify. Find a better way to, to get you all that information. Okay, I think we'll see what happens on Tuesday as well.
Yeah, well, yeah, and that, yeah, last call, if anybody else wants to weigh in on what's being proposed, please do before we, before we adjourn, but yes, we're.
I don't want to, I have something completely unrelated. I just want to say real quick for folks so that we can have this conversation before the calendars get away from us. So it's unrelated to this. So everybody's done talking about that, I think. Okay. As you know, there are two items moving through Planning and Zoning Commission right now. One about parking requirement minimums along transit corridors and one about increasing the unit count for buy right multifamily, which is currently at fifteen, forty-nine units. And at fifty, they come to council. They are suggesting even a square footage model that I understand may not be able to be implemented legally and so on. But here's why I'm asking. In the past, this council has spoken out about trying to move multifamily housing of larger units into more of what we did similar to the hotel overlay where there was a community benefits table. There was a map. You could include some areas like transit corridors and do parking requirements that way. You could disclude areas that we were maybe sensitive to rapid gentrification or something like that as an overlay. So here's why I'm bringing this up. I was talking with planning staff and it sounds like it's moving through P and Z. It's going to come to us just as they have it. But if this council is interested in it being more dynamic, like an overlay with a community benefits table or maybe putting the parking minimums and the unit count together into one thing, we need to kind of inform them of that now so that we avoid it going from all the way from PZ to us and then us saying, wait, we need all these other things and then having to go back through the whole cycle. So I'm saying that just so you'll get your gears turning because if it is something you're looking at as an interest of you and you would want to hear more about it, dig in, do the research, hear from staff on it, we probably need to signal to them that we're going to want more layers than just what's coming from P and Z. So I know I would like to look at more in-depth way to do that. So I'm not looking for y'all to support this or anything, but it was just a moment to have you all together and say this is coming. And it comes pretty quick since we only have one July and one August meeting. So something to think about and maybe address.
Suggestion about process, we do have a calendared and affordable housing work session. That could be an opportunity to get a little preview of this and give a little direction. If, if I see some nodding, would that be helpful? Yes, that's, yes, we're getting nods to that. So maybe that's a good chance when we're all together. And Rachel's like, oh, my gosh, I've already done this. Okay, anyway, go ahead, Rachel.
I, I think we could maybe fold in a brief conversation. We do have a pretty robust conversation already planned for that with our consultant coming in. And so I, I would just want to level set expectations that there, there won't be a ton of time because we, we will be having a lot of conversation around the Landy's incentive grant, housing trust fund, and then recommendations for the affordable housing bond.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you guys want to add a thirty minutes ahead, like start the meeting a little bit earlier so we can touch on this. It'd be an opportunity. I, I do see what you're saying, Sage. It is a little bit, if the planning side goes through this whole process and they do all these things and then it lands with us and we say, oh, no, redo like we like to do.
Working on it. They're having really in-depth meetings about it. And I want our volunteer community inputters to feel respected and heard. I just know that I sense that this council is going to say, this is great and, and maybe we can get the ands in there and work all together through it instead of sending it all the way back through.
It'd be helpful if they came to HCD before.
Maybe that's a good idea.
Proceeded so far. For a couple of years, yeah, for a couple of years, we've been talking about wanting a benefits table.
Yes, exactly.
That's nothing new.
Right. And it's not in the current proposal because there, what really probably needs to happen is that, like HCD you did with AHAQ as the boards and commissions, but we probably need PED and PZ to line up so that there's other committees and maybe HCD as well weighing in on these things before they just blister up to council. Because this is a hefty one. Council has spoken out about it before and I just want to keep it in good process and not waste anybody's time.
Now, one thing Sage, though, power that, okay, even if they put this through, okay? Still, if you decide to do the benefits table for all the apartments and things like that, that still would not really impact that already being in place. You see what I mean? It's not like.
My understanding is what they're suggesting.
Because what they're suggesting is basically trying to get more affordable housing and be able to control the parking situation. But even if these people are actually going to build by right and they're building affordable units next to transit, what are you saying that you want to charge them up with a benefit table for doing this?
I mean. No, I think there's a lot to be learned and unpacked in all that and a lot of pros and cons. It comes from just understanding everything that has been brought up. It's just my sense is that council has been talking about this. And if it comes to us at the level they're talking about it, it's not exactly what we've been talking about and we may complicate the process. I'm just not sure it's fully baked for council is all. And I don't want, I would love to see us have this.
The only thing I'm concerned about is that people that, right now, all they're trying to do is get to incentivize more affordable housing closer to transit as quickly as possible. So, and I'm just, I'm sort of missing the point. So, and I'm just, I, I'm sort of missing the point how this table that you're talking about, which we've talked about, is going to actually impact those people doing this because it.
It would depend on how we decide it. It may help them a lot. You know, a lot of what we see are developers backing off of doing projects that the council. And this is similar to the hotels. It's like if we can spell out the process more clearly and get you on paper what it is we see, want as outcomes, then you can perhaps move more swiftly through it, thereby saving money, creating more affordable units, knowing exactly what to expect, et cetera. And there's, I mean, we could go back and forth on the opinions of what's good and bad, and I don't wanna do that right now. I just want to say.
I just, I think it's a good idea. Don't get me wrong. I'm just trying, I don't wanna hold up. Right now, we're just holding up a lot of projects and people moving forward.
Exactly, and if it comes to us unbaked, we'll be sending it back and it will take even longer. So I'm trying to say, hey, wait, let's, before it comes to us, let's make sure we're all in the kitchen.
Yeah, because we've been trying to get this benefit table for these apartments how many years? I think so. I'm just saying, I, that's the only thing I'm.
Yeah, let's do it. That's what I'm saying, let's do it. They're not even talking about it yet and they didn't know about it. So, yeah. That was it, sorry to derail.
Thanks, Scott. All right, okay, everybody.
Want to say anything?
I'll make it brief. Councilman Turner, this is a topic scheduled for the July PED meeting.
Oh, okay, well.
So it's happening, is that what I'm hearing? Because it's coming to us in September, right? So our options.
Yeah, we, planning staff would like to come to PED in July and just talk through, what is the strategy for making changes to the UDO and how do we move forward? Because it's, it's very important but very complex too, to make these types of changes. So we, we did want to come to PD, PED in July and have this type of conversation with that council committee.
Okay, well, that's very helpful.
And you could have piped up a little earlier.
I didn't wanna interrupt, so I was just trying to.
I know, you're big, yeah, I know. All right, all right, good afternoon, everyone.